I know.
I know.
I, I emailed her my grad card. I don't know if she received it.
Just like, oh, that's here.
I'll have to.
You're very good. I mean, I have to order. Like, I was just like, late to my mom and I was just like, Facebook?
Yeah. These are live. All right. Are we ready?
After the session's over.
Are you ready, Tiffany? I'd like to call to order the May fifteenth Shakopee Public School Regular Business Meeting. Tiffany, could you please do the roll?
Mohammed?
Yes.
Aldridge?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Johnson?
Valdez?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Aditya?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item tonight, we always start our meetings with our Saber Pride portion of our meeting. And tonight, we are celebrating, um, to start off our meeting, our student school board members. We are, um, really coming upon our, uh, literally, it's been a year since we selected our first two students to serve on the Shakopee School Board. And tonight, we also have, um, with us, our new student school board member, Michelle. Raise your hand. Who, um, will officially start with us on July one. She will be replacing Danielle, um, who will be graduating with, um, June tenth. And I want to reflect a little bit back to twenty nineteen on the drive back from the MSBA Leadership Conference. Former board member Judy Tomzek, who's here tonight, and I discussed how important the student voice was in so many decisions that the board members made, and that it was really missing from our board table. Ms. Tomzek did some more research and talked to Dr. Redman about what we could do, um, and what that would look like in Shakopee. And then, we all know what happened, COVID, and nothing happened. And, um, we were more focused on trying to keep our students and staff safe during that important time in our district. However, we never forgot about how important that idea was to our board, because I think we all remembered that idea and how important that we felt that student voice was. So tonight, we are honored to have with us Kirk Schneiderwind, the Executive Director of the Minnesota School Board Association in attendance, to share a little bit more with us about how students across the state have made an impact at the board table. Welcome, Kirk. We're happy to have you with us this evening.
Madam Chair, my, thank you very much. My name is Kirk Schneiderwind, Executive Director for the Minnesota School Boards Association, and I, I think you get, the Shakopee Board and its, and community made a really positive step in the right direction to get the student voice at the board table. We know many times that policy decisions at the board table sometimes don't always hear from the students. And so it's really important that you have made that positive step forward. But, one of the great things about, uh, tonight is that I'm here for more than just that. I'm here tonight to name Shakopee student Danielle DeKay as the recipient of the Minnesota School Boards Association, Robert E. Meeks Student School Board Member Scholarship. The three. Congratulations. This three thousand dollar scholarship is one of only two, one of only two in this state, and is given away as a way to reward and encourage our public students to become involved in leading and governing of their school and learn about the importance of having locally elected school boards. School boards are elected to help lead their school district with an overall eye on student experience and performance. This is why board members run for the office and why they put all the time and effort into being better board members. There is no better way to get input as a board member than getting it directly from a student school board member. We show that a hundred and twenty-six of our three hundred and thirty-two public school districts in Minnesota have a student school board member at the table, and Shakopee should feel very proud to have Danielle working with them. So, Madam Chair, I will turn it back to you, and if you want to make a couple of comments, but I just first want to congratulate you, Danielle, for being recognized among a number of students, uh, and being selected tonight.
So, as, and I know Greg led the committee, um, of school board, um, members from across the state who reviewed all of the applications, um, I think there were thirty, refresh my mind, thirty-two, thirty-six? Thirty-three, okay, that was close. Applications, um, and, um, Danielle stood out and, and the comments were, um, it was really hard for me, obviously, because I know Danielle, but, um, I really leaned on all of the comments from other board members, and, um, they were, um, Danielle was a very strong candidate, um, and just everything that you did, considering that you were a very first-year school board member, from bringing in all of the student voices and listening, going into the middle schools, um, and getting that student voice, working with Aditya, and bringing all of that perspective to the board table. You weren't just here to, um, learn about what it was like to be a board member, but between both of you, you really made a difference. And we really didn't know what to expect, um, having board members. So, you were not here just, um, like, what's it like? You really did make a difference, and you did bring that perspective of, here's what students are saying, and here's what they would like to see with every topic that we discussed. And you weren't afraid to ask questions. And I think that was the difference, um, and your essay, um, was fabulous. And, um, there was not one, um, board member that reviewed your application that didn't have you ranked very high, um, amongst all of the applications, so, um, I congratulate you, and, um, it's, um, I'm very proud of you.
The best part, Madam Chair, is the big check. Now, I would, I would, I would, you're not going to be able to deposit that tonight, but nonetheless, come on, get some photos.
And Judy, we would like you to come and be part of this picture as well.
We're doing the whole board?
Yep. And Aditya, we want you to come and be part of this too. Did you want, you know?
Well, I'll probably need two rows, because otherwise it gets too wide. So, if I could get a row of four numbers in that, so you can come up. If you'll be in front a little bit, five people in the front who need to sit in that.
I appreciate you here.
Okay. We need this, okay, someone who's a couple of time around this side? Okay. Many will not stop. Here we go. All right. One, two, three.
And everyone wave over here, because this is going on Mom's phone.
All right, moving on to the next, um, item on the agenda, which is another Saber Pride item. Got to flip my page here, all, all the excitement. Another exciting Saber Pride moment took place last Thursday, and that was, um, honoring our employee appreciation winners and retirees. Each year, Shakopee Public Schools holds an end-of-year celebration sponsored by generous community partners to honor the incredible staff in our district. As part of this celebration, staff-nominated fellow members that have gone above and beyond to support our students, peers, and families. At the same time, retirees are also honored. Taking time to celebrate staff accomplishments and milestones are incredibly important, and we are so appreciative of our entire team within the district and donations from our partners that make events like this possible. On the screen is a quick highlight of staff members that were honored during our end-of-the-year celebration. Please join me in congratulating these staff members, and look for additional staff spotlights throughout the summer on the district's social media channels and school websites. And our last Saber Pride, um, highlight for this evening is our winter athletics and activities. So I'd like to invite Matt Hanson and Andy Brown to the front to recognize our winter athletes and our activities. Matt's first.
Thank you, and it's always nice when we have some of our athletes that are able to join us. So we are going to start first with our boys swim and dive team, and our head coach, Eric Hills, is here to talk a little bit about them.
All right, so first off, I wanted to thank everyone for having these guys here tonight. Um, I, I cannot impart on you how much these guys work, um, year in and year out, and, uh, many of these guys have, uh, they're, they're swimming year-round, they're dedicating, uh, their entire lives, quite honestly, to swimming. We've got one guy headed off to college to swim as well, um, so I just wanted to, once again, say, uh, congratulations on a great season, guys, you worked so hard to get here. And, uh, we had a great season, and you guys were a really big part of it. Uh, we do have some guys that aren't able to make it here tonight, um, due to illness and being out of town and being at swim practice, um, so they weren't able to come tonight, but, uh, a couple of our guys here have wet hair. They just came from a swim practice to make it here, um, so again, just showing their dedication. Uh, we had a great season this year, you know, probably one of the smallest teams we've had, and yet we still finished, uh, four and five in the conference, kind of right in the middle of the pack. Uh, we were able to qualify a relay to state, um, which we had, um, Landon Vopel and Charlie Cuts, as well as, you can see on the picture up there, Bennett Burfin and Kale Fleming on as well. Um, and then we had our alternates Luke Jens and Tyler Gannon over here as well. Um, and so those guys were part of our relay team that took, uh, seventeenth place in the state. And, um, we also have Landon, who placed in, uh, eleventh place in the Hundred Freestyle. So, congrats, guys, great job.
Our second group that we'd like to recognize is our wrestling team, and Coach Alex Van Krevelin will come say a few words.
Hi there. So, we have three of our wrestlers here. Um, I just finished my second year coaching here, I just want to say thank you to this community. It's, these first two years of my coaching experience have been amazing. To see the support for sports is, is, it's, it's great, so I know I appreciate, uh, everything going on in Shakopee. And, um, I brought three, three wrestlers, some spring sports came in the way of having some, some others here, but that's okay. This year was a great year, came up a little short of that team-state tournament, but, uh, really, really saw a lot of growth, um, and really proud of the, the work that our, our boys and girls put in. And, uh, today I have three of our wrestlers with me, um, A.J. Smith here as a senior, um, took third in state, which is fantastic. Um, he's going to go wrestle and go to school, um, next year, and we're really, really proud of him. The next is Connor Warren. Connor Warren is a junior for us, um, actually went to the state tournament not ranked, which is kind of rare to see someone who's not ranked place, and he took fourth place, so had a phenomenal run at the state tournament, um, and we're really excited to have him back next year as a, as a leader in the room. And then, Cassie Gonzalez is a freshman state champ. Um, she actually pinned her way through the state tournament, which is very, very rare, uh, let alone being a freshman, so, um, completely dominant run for her, and, and she has a shot at being, uh, Shakopee's first three or four-time state champ, and, um, we believe she's got a really good shot at that. And then now with us today is, um, we have two, we have two other seniors, Leo, Leo couldn't be here tonight. He was a state runner-up, he's going to go wrestle and, and go to school next year. And then, um, Joelle Mackham, um, she hasn't tracked me tonight, so she wasn't here, we really wanted to get her here. Um, she was a state champ, she pinned her way through the state tournament as well. It was probably the best one-two punch in the state, was Cassie and Joelle weight-to-weight class. You know, a little-known fact is, we only sent two girls to the state tournament, and we took second place as a team. So some teams sent five, six, seven, eight, we sent two, and we took second place, so it's pretty dang cool. Um, and then Joelle actually won Mrs. Minnesota, which is given to a senior who exceeds in both athletics and wrestling and also in academics. It's a big, big deal in the world of wrestling to get that, so we're extremely proud of her. I'm really proud of all of them, so we appreciate you guys' support, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will continue. So our next activity we'll talk about is our adaptive floor hockey team, and I think many of you heard, this was our first year that we had adaptive floor hockey, so we're very thankful and supportive that the board was willing and able to get adaptive floor hockey in, and a state-sponsored activity for us this year. But our adaptive team, known as the Southern Stars, had their inaugural season. The team is made up of athletes both from Shakopee and Prior Lake, and they came together and had a great first year. We had our first game. We hosted. We had a win against Oatana, and not only that first game, but every home game. You should have seen the support we had for our athletes. It was truly remarkable. Didn't win maybe as much as we had hoped we would have, but we had a nice upset win in the first round of the playoffs, and just look forward to many more years and support for not only our athletes, but also for adaptive floor hockey. So that was floor hockey. Our next one is boys basketball. Our boys basketball team finished the year 16 and 11. They were 13 and 5 in the South Suburban Conference. It was good enough for third place this year. We were the three seed in the section tournament. Unfortunately, we lost Chan Hassen. Chan Hassen made a pretty good run. They made it all the way to the section finals. So similar to many of our sports, if you hear us talk about it, we have a very good conference and a very tough section, so sometimes it's just remarkable to get out of the first round or second round, and this year we just got clipped in that first round by Chan Hassen. The unfortunate part is, the last week of the regular season, we beat the number-two and number-five team in state, so we kind of thought we were on our way, but unfortunately, we got a little bit of a slow start in that first round and ended up losing to Chan Hassen. We were led by seniors Tremaine Fulton and juniors Jalen Langsy and Isaac Snell, so we have a good group coming back next year. Our next group is our girls' basketball team, and the kind of word for girls' basketball year was injury. We finished 11 and 15, 7 and 10 in the conference, but we did not play a single conference game with our starting lineup, so somebody was banged up each and every game, so it was a little tough to get the momentum this year coming off of a state tournament run last year. But overall, a good season. We ended up losing in the first round to Prior Lake. We were led by senior Shyla Moore, who's going to go on to play college basketball, junior college next year, and juniors Nicole Manke and Olivia Paulicki. So again, we have some good talent coming back next year. Our next group is our dance team, and our dance team had a really nice winter season. They finished seventh in the conference and then 10th overall in the section. You know, they have two different types of years. The first year, or the first part of the year is the conference season, so that's all South Suburban teams compete up until the winter break, and then after winter break, they get into their invite season, and they actually got a first-place finish in the Rosemont Invite for Kick, which was something we haven't done in quite a while. We're super proud of our team for that effort under the leadership of Sam Sair. And then one thing of note, we get to show off our school the next couple of years as we will be hosting the section tournament for the next two-year cycle, so that'll be good for our team and our community to host that. Our next group is girls' hockey, and our girls' hockey team was under the first-year coach Jamie Grossman. They finished 15 and 11. It was good enough for fourth place in the South Suburban Conference. They were the three seed in the section tournament. They beat Jefferson in the first round and then lost to a tough Holy Family team in the semifinals. A couple really outstanding years from Emma Hyer, Annika Wilmert, Hannah Grabanowski, Callie Peterson. But if you watched any of our games, really since about winter break all the way through the section tournament, our backbone was Molly Moreau, and she was our goalie, and she was just fantastic. She ended up being the Star Tribune Player of the Week one of the weeks, Saber Athlete of the Week one of the weeks, but just had a really outstanding end to her senior year, so it was fun to watch her and the girls this year. And our final team is our boys' hockey team. Boys' hockey team did something we haven't done in 18 years, and that was win a section hockey game. So we were 16 and 11 overall. We were third place in the South Suburban Conference, which is the highest finish we've ever had. We hosted Prior Lake in the first round. We won our first game. Like I said, unfortunately, just like we talked about, whether it's the conference or the section, we ended up facing the eventual state champions in Minnetoka in the second round. We held them to three goals, which was an accomplishment, but our boys played really well this year. We were led by seniors, our senior Jackson Vogel and sophomore Cooper Simpson, and very similar to our female goalie Molly, our junior goalie Alexi Houston was outstanding all year. So if you watched, he kept us in a lot of games, so it was fun to watch him. The big news, if you've paid attention to boys' hockey or girls' hockey or just hockey in general, is that I talked, I think, last time, we had an opportunity to put a bid in for Hockey Day Minnesota, and we actually were awarded Hockey Day Minnesota 2025, so that's coming up in January of '25. Should be a great experience, not only the hockey community, but the Shakopee community in general. So lots of exciting things in the world of winter athletics. So thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Matt. Andy, activities. I think there's a lot going on with activities, too.
Always, yeah, lots to do. Thanks for having me. One thing to bridge the gap between Matt and me is that you may have seen in the recent news that the State High School League did approve boys' volleyball as a sport for the future, starting in two years, so we'll be kind of bridging the gap, releasing them from sort of my purview or tiny bit of oversight into kind of Matt's real official world. So that's a cool thing, and if you attend those games, you'll just kind of see the vast majority of those athletes are kids that aren't playing any other sports, and so we're just opening up, by putting that team into place, we'll be opening up to a whole different population. I'll jump to this slide in a second, but I just wanted to, one thing that I remembered on the way over here that I should just report on is that over spring break, we, I was lucky enough to get to go with our European music tour. Our band and choir did a joint tour for the first time, and went, we spent most of our time in Austria, but ducked into Italy for a little bit as well. Got to perform at a church in Venice and two kind of professional venues in Innsbruck and Salzburg, and just had a fantastic time. Students represented Shakopee really well. Michelle's nodding, she was there. It was great. So that was a fantastic experience, and they'll be planning on getting kind of on their alternating cycles again, so probably a choir trip in two years and a band trip again in three years. Esports had their second state tournament. They have two seasons over the course of the year, and so their second, our second season, we had two teams qualify. So you can see on the lower left there, we had a 3v3 team. They made the quarterfinals and lost to, I think, the eventual champions, and then we had a larger team. You can kind of see that picture in the upper right. That's sort of one of the featured stations, and that's Coach Taren standing behind them, so they go to the Mall of America, to this big gaming arena and play there. And that Valorant team also made the quarterfinals, and I think lost to the champions as well. So if you're going to lose to anyone, that's how you got to do it. So that's esports. Speech continues. Trying to turn themselves into a dynasty. There's Danielle up there. You can see that. So we qualified six competitors in the state tournament, and then, and that was held at Eastview on a Friday evening. It got incredibly late. There were some late schedule changes, so they didn't have the day off, and so I think Danielle, you did your final round at about 10 o'clock, maybe even a little bit later. So it was, it was late. I had the privilege to watch Danielle in that final round, compete with some fantastic people, and I know she, when I talked to her right before, she was pretty thrilled just to make the finals, and then she finished in the top half, which was really awesome. And Grim Joshi, in his third straight finals appearance at the state tournament, took second. So that's a third, second, second, so that's a pretty big legacy, which is burnished a little bit by the next slide, where just this last weekend, Grim actually won a national championship, which is an amazing, amazing deal. You qualify for this tournament by accumulating points at tournaments throughout the year and kind of demonstrating a really high level of performance, and so this has ultimately beat a crowd of about 200 in his category. And I've mentioned it in the board meeting, it's impossible. None of us could do it, what he does. It is a, it's an eight-minute speech with citations based on a question that he doesn't hear until he is standing in front of the room. So it's really amazing. So Grim has set a standard for Shakopee speech with the guidance of Coach Bertram. In that particular category, we are now, two years in a row, we have sent, we've had the top three places in the section, so we take all the section places to the state tournament in that category. So there's kind of a legacy, really, being built there. DECA, you want to flip to the next one first and then come back? Yeah, so we had, the state DECA convention was a while ago, but we qualified a number of people. The five that you can see in the picture here are the ones who qualified for the International Conference by virtue of their performance. They placed high enough, and then there are a number of other criteria. We get to send three to a development workshop because our DECA chapter is so large and some things like that. So we actually had, 12 students had to the International Conference, which was in Orlando just a couple weeks ago, and then we had two actually finish in the top, in the top 10. So you can see Paul and Nitya here representing DECA at a really high level. A couple other things, real quick, and I will bring some of these students back at a future date, but we've had our All-State Musicians announced in late April, and so we have a number of choir students, Clark Kileman, Hank Hewitt, Cannon Miller, Lashley Pembuena, Parker Swanson, and Pema Thinley, as well as some band students made All-State. Devin Mendez, Colin Hokinson, and, oh, Michelle Seberg also is, she's an All-State Band qualifier this year. So pretty fantastic stuff. So we can clap for Michelle since she's here, I think. And then the one other really exciting development to report is that this summer, there will be a resurrection of the Shakopee High School Marching Band, and so I'm extremely grateful to our band directors, who are going to do their best to bring it back. We're going to start a little bit easy, but they are in the process of, or maybe have already finished registering to march at the state fair, and so they're going to do a summer camp, and band boosters have agreed to pitch in for some real basic uniforms because the startup costs are impressive, so they're not going to be kind of fully uniform or anything, but kind of just giving kids the basics, since we don't have anyone in the building who's done it before, but we'll be bringing it back and marching at the state fair, and that's really exciting. It's not definite yet, but there's a possibility, I guess, that Dr. Redmond's going to wear the tall hat and carry the baton. I don't know. This is probably the first he's hearing of it, but I think, I just wanted to say it in a public arena and put the pressure on. So lots of other good things going on and activities, a few things that haven't quite wrapped up yet, and I'll try to get some of these students back in front of you in June for some of that recognition. So that's the bulk of our world at the moment.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Moving to item four on our agenda, which is the consideration of the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Smith and a second by Valdez. Any further question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item five on our agenda is the public comment portion of our meeting. This is a time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member, a member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic pertaining to the school board business. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to two and a half minutes. The sign-up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to this evening's meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to this evening's meeting, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is item six, the consent items. We have a few personnel items on the agenda, consideration of bills and authorization to pay the same, some donations. Any questions in regards to the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
We have a motion by Valdez and a second by Mohammed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Moving to item seven, which is the action portion of our meeting. Item 7.1 is the central building purchase agreement, and I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Dr. Redmond for further discussion and presentation.
Certainly, and I'm joined, if we've got questions, by Corey Witback from Tatanka Real Estate Advisors, who does a lot of work with our district on leases and has been with us since we decided to put the central building property up for sale a few months ago. Really, this is the culmination of what is now about a four-year journey when we talk about the central building. We had a Community Facilities Task Force, which was looking at, primarily looking at what to do with our early learning programs, and ultimately that decision, we moved them from Central to Pearson. That Community Facilities Task Force studied our enrollment trends and just the state of all the buildings, and obviously at that time, reported to the board that there were very, very large deferred maintenance expenses for the central building, basically making it a wash at that time if you were to just do all that deferred maintenance versus building new. And I want to point out, no plans to build anything new, just using that as a comparison. And so then, you know, that committee presented on December 9th of 2019, and then as time progressed, we had another Community Facilities Task Force, really specifically for, hey, what do we do with the central building? You know, at that time, Pearson, you know, had moved out, and again, it was a facility in need of deferred maintenance, high costs there. Those, believe it or not, don't go down over time. That deficit, or that group presented on August 23rd of 2021, and at that point, really, it was determined that most likely the way forward was to look to sell the property. We spent more time kind of studying, analyzing things, and then a decision was made, you know, I'm trying to think now, about six months ago by the board, let's, it is time to sell the central building. It's been empty. We actually pay higher insurance costs for an empty building than when it was in use, but we, you know, we moved even the print shop out of there, and so it was put on the market. It was on there for a while. We ended up with multiple offers and accepted an offer for $1.5 million, and that is what is in that purchase agreement in the packet, and so would be, I'll be asking you to approve that this evening, and that sale would be to Scott County CDA, and they've been, thus far in this process, they've been a great partner, with us being obviously the seller and them being the purchaser. Lots of kind of nuances to that agreement, but it is all spelled out in the purchase agreement. And then if you had any questions, some I can answer, and others, we'd have, you know, Corey come up to the microphone, and he certainly has far more expertise than do I.
Any questions in regards to the sale of Central? I know that this has been something that the board has been looking at at least four or five years, at least since I've been on the board, and that's been five years. Looking at what do we do with the space, making the right decision to move out of Central into Pearson. When that building was vacated as a sixth-grade center, that was the right decision at that time, because it made sense for that age children, and there is a lot of maintenance that is needed in that building. I think it's $10 to $12 million is needed, if not more, just to bring that building up to maintenance, up to standards, and I'm sure there is a lot more than that that's needed. We need all new boilers in that building. The insurance on that building right now, just in the state that it's in, with it being vacated, is extremely expensive, and so I think that the sale of this building is the right thing to do. I know there's a lot of sentiment in this community with this building because it is an original, or one of, it's, it's, it's an older school building. There's a lot of memory, and with that, there's a lot of sentiment. There's a lot of generations in Shakopee of families that have gone through this building, but there's also a lot of risk for the school district having that building sitting there, and I know that Scott County is going to put that, that property to good use. that property to good use, um, and something that we could use in our community. And so to me, they've been a great partner. It's a win-win, um, for both parties, and I totally support the decision and the sale of this building at this time. It, it makes perfect sense. Does anyone else have any discussion, concerns?
Madam Chair, if I may, just to echo, there was a lot of thought, a lot of analysis, a lot of compassion that went into the decision, um, and as you mentioned, this is something that's been discussed over the, essentially the last five years as part of those community facility task force. I was fortunate to be on the, the first of those, as well as the, the analysis being done. And certainly, uh, thanks to Mr. Whitback for, uh, you know, his contributions in helping us do this.
And I know there's been some discussion. We did have community members that came forward with their concerns about the historical mural, um, that was in this building, and, um, we have made sure that that has been preserved, um, and have worked with, with the Shakopee Menawak and Sioux to make sure that that's been preserved and it's been taken care of, and will stay in this community for a very long time.
Is it, uh, an action item?
Yes, this is an action item.
Okay, I will make the motion, uh, to be approved of the purchase agreement between Shakopee, um, Public Schools and Scott County Community Development Agency.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mohammed and a second by Johnson to approve the sale of the central building to the Scott County CDA. Any further discussion? Seeing none, oh, Dr. Redmond.
Since you brought it up, Madam Chair, just wanted to, uh, point out, we've had the Midwest Art Conservation Center been in salvaging, saving the mural. They're experts, one of a handful in the nation, doing that kind of work, and, uh, they're well, well underway with that process, and they've been doing a great job, and, um, and then, you know, we're, we've, we've got something we believe in the works with the Shakopee, Menawak, and Sioux community about, uh, a new home for that mural, uh, that we're beginning to work on. But certainly, uh, we, we heard the community loud and clear about how important that mural was to them as, you know, a key part of that building, and, uh, took that very seriously, and have been working with, uh, a great group of people at that Midwest Art Conservation Center. So I feel really good about where that project is and, uh, you know, feel good that we're, we're saving that mural and salvaging it, and it's, it's in pretty good shape.
Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Corey, for all your work in helping us with this process. I appreciate it. Item 7.2, excuse me, 7.2 is, um, our welcoming of our new school board, uh, member, and I'll turn this over to Dr. Redmond.
Certainly, very, uh, again, this is, um, an action item, uh, as, as we did, uh, last year for the first time, went through a, a, uh, very detailed process of seeking applicants to be the next student member of the school board. Uh, as our plan of action has always been, you know, we, we would like one student who is in 12th grade and one student who is in 11th grade serving at the same time, and then as the 12th grader graduates and the 11th grader becomes a 12th grader, we would go out and seek, uh, 10th grade applicants who will be entering 11th grade in the fall. And, uh, we did that, held a series, you know, had applications, held a series of interviews, um, and I would make a very, very strong recommendation to the board, um, so strong, in fact, we've invited her and we've got her sitting up here to, uh, approve the, the work of that committee and, uh, approve, uh, Michelle Seberg as an ex-student member of the school board.
I also want to just say that, um, I know Michelle from HOSA, and I know how much of a committed and very diligent individual she is from HOSA, and I remember meeting her, um, during a HOSA meeting and hearing her talk and speak and listening to her ideas about what we should do, um, for different projects and things like that, and especially about our conference, and she's a very, um, good individual. I'm sure she's going to be perfect for this role.
I was on the, uh, the selection committee conducting the interviews, and, uh, I just want to thank all the candidates who applied, uh, um, the, the few that interviewed did very well, and, uh, we had, uh, we had discussion afterwards, uh, just, uh, noting that, that everybody who applied was, was a, a quality candidate, and it's just another reminder, and I've said this before, that, you know, you see, you see, uh, candidates apply like this, and, and Danielle, and Aditya, and now Michelle, and it's just, you know, whenever you, you see things out in the world and you're worried about our future, you just have to see kids like this and realize, you know, the future's in good hands.
Right. Yep. Yep. Aditya, did you want to add anything?
Uh, I did want to add that, just kind of restate what has already been said before. Michelle is a really good candidate for this position. I haven't had many extracurriculars with her, but I, she is in the band program, I'm also in the band program, and, but since that she has, she has earned her place on, on the all-state band, and I've had a couple of classes with her as well. I know from experience that she is a hard worker, and she, and she is pretty determined and will just do something. She, she will not stop until she has it done, so she's extremely reliable, and I would highly recommend her for this position.
Awesome, and I was also on the selection committee, and I echo the same comments that Jeff and Danielle and Aditya shared, and, so, you have big shoes to fill with, with Danielle leaving, but I have full confidence that working with Aditya, um, that you'll be able to do it and continue to carry forward, um, the excellent work that, um, both Danielle and Aditya have done so far with our school board, so. I will make a motion that, uh, we, uh, approve Michelle to be, um, our, um, new student school board member.
I'll give an emphatic second.
So we have a motion by Peterson and a second by Brophy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Welcome, Michelle. We look forward to working with you. Item 7.3 on our action portion of our agenda is the Equip Innovation Grant, and I am happy to have Julie Ritter at the Pearson Early Learning Center, um, she's our administrator at the Pearson Early Learning Center, um, here with us this evening, who can tell us how exciting it is to be at Pearson versus Central.
I know, I found it very interesting that I was here tonight to hear the, of the, um, the continuing, uh, continuation of the plans for Central Family Center, um, after having been a part of those, um, facility meetings for so long, and just to reiterate how much we enjoy having our programs at Pearson, so thank you very much for that support. So, but tonight, I am here as the administrator of Pearson Early Learning Center, wearing my early childhood special education hat. We have been awarded a grant by the State of Minnesota, by Minnesota Department of Education to take an in-depth look at the practices of our early intervention team. It's called Evidence-Based Quality Intervention Practices, and takes a close look at building caregiver capacity, using coaching interactions, embedding it into the routines of the child's natural environment. Now, these are practices that we already do in it, with our early intervention team, but we know that we can do better, and this app, by doing this application and being awarded this grant, it will help us take a better and deeper look at those practices to make sure that we are doing those practices with fidelity. The key components of Equip include coaching interaction practices, that's coaching for the adults, for the teachers involved, taking a look at those natural learning environment practices, always keeping a family-centered focus and a culturally responsive practices focus, and the area that I am most excited about is the resources-based practices. That will allow us to take a close look and making sure that we are incorporating the practices into our program and using them with fidelity, using a primary coach approach with joint visits planning and team consult and teaming and collaboration. So what does that mean for Pearson Early Learning Center? So first of all, our early learning center, excuse me, our early intervention team serves children with special needs, birth to age three. These practices often take us into the homes of these families to work directly with parents and the children. Equip will help our team incorporate practices for greater efficiency of resources and quality of practice, including that coaching, the natural environment practices, again, the family-centered, and the resource-based practices. MDE has created an agreement with us, with your support, to access external funding to take this in-depth look at our practices. MDE will provide funding. What we're especially excited about is the training opportunities. It is difficult to find, um, good training for early intervention teams, and will support our team at Pearson up to five years with an external coach from the Minnesota Centers of Excellence. Our commitment includes a supportive administration, that we will address barriers to participation of our team and create a plan to sustain the work beyond the grant time. So again, this agreement is in place for up to five years. Our being on the agenda tonight and telling you about this opportunity, um, is seeking that appropriate local authorization. There is an additional slide deck available that will provide greater detail if you are interested, and again, this presentation tonight is notice of the grant award. Any questions?
When does the grant start? When do, can we start utilizing it?
July 1st.
Good. And how many staff members can participate in the grant?
Um, our early intervention team, which currently includes, um, two early childhood special education teachers, a speech-language pathologist, an OT, a PT, and our social worker and myself, I get to participate in the training as well.
Wow, that's awesome.
Mm-hmm.
So is this money, um, being, um, training expense?
Yeah, it's to help facilitate those training expenses, so mileage expenses. There, this, um, this innovation takes an incredible staff investment, so there is an expectation that staff will, uh, provide or may need to work outside of regular work hours, so the grant provides, um, funding to support staff to attend training beyond their regular workday. Um, it also provides funding for additional resources that we might need, um, and those, those are the primary items.
Thank you.
Tim?
Madam Chair, if I may, um, Julie, did I hear that, uh, some of this program includes, uh, uh, even, uh, curriculum or support in, in the home, right? So it was part of that, uh, you know, cultural awareness and...
Absolutely, yes. So early intervention provides the majority of their services to families in the homes of families. So making sure that we are approaching our families with cultural awareness is exceedingly important, and this opportunity, excuse me, this funding will allow us to, um, attend training to help us with that.
Fabulous, thank you.
Any other questions for Julie? I love the fact that Shakopee is getting the opportunity to, to receive some of these awesome grants for all age groups across the board. That's, that's just fabulous. So is this, this is an action item?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Brophy and a second by Valdez. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie.
Very good. Thank you very much. I look forward to providing you with updates in the future.
Yeah, we can't wait to hear about it. Item 7.4 under our action portion of our meeting is a resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for the 23-24 school year, and I will turn that over to Dr. Redmond.
Yeah, this is an annual resolution, uh, that school districts must approve or have their boards approve, uh, in order to participate in the Minnesota State High School League. Two things that I think are important. One, this process is entirely online, so when the board approves it, please know that, uh, we will be doing the online fulfillment of the clerk signature and other needed information. And then number two, uh, you know, the financial situation with the Minnesota State High School League is much improved from where it was, uh, a couple, few years back, and, and they expect, uh, you know, fees to be flat or even decreased for next year, so, uh, certainly would ask the board, uh, to approve, uh, this resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Valdez and a second by Smith to approve the membership for next school year at the State High School League. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Onto item eight, which is the informational portion of our meeting, and 8.1 is a technology update, and I'd like Brian Droes, our director of our technology department, to come forward and give us an update. Welcome, Brian, I haven't seen you for a while. Good to see you.
I know. Spent a little bit, so. I didn't put a ton of things in here, at least the way it would look on the slides, um, but there's a lot of opportunity for conversation, and I want to start with that thought, um, that I'm hitting on a few topics that there might be questions you have, so I wanted to kind of leave that open and invite that discussion, because this isn't just me talking, it's me getting some feedback or seeing if there's anything that you need clarified. So kind of moving through, the first couple of slides are just who we are. We are our tech department, and this is our vision. Service is one of the key areas in there, you know, we are supporting people every day and trying to provide good customer service and make them have a good experience. And then moving on to people in the department, um, thank you, Tiffany. Um, so there's almost 30 of us, and it ranges from people that work in the building, and so if you're at the high school up in C300, we've got a cast of characters up there, it changes, um, often. Turnover is a thing, but we always get good people to replace them, and, um, also out in the building, it's just throughout the district, we have those good people helping the kids and the staff have functional devices, and our whole crew all the way through. And I've been on our little messaging platform, I know Chris is out in, out at his base doing military training and watching the video right now, so I got to make sure I don't say anything stupid, or that he has to correct me on along the way. So briefly, the topics we're going to cover, we're going to talk about, uh, system and physical security, tech in the curriculum, and the role of technology, and let's just jump right in. Cybersecurity, so this is a big one, I'm going to take a few minutes on this topic. And it hits the news a lot because anytime a business or in particular, you know, what probably perks us up is when we hear about schools getting hit. Minneapolis suffered a, I don't know if they're calling it a breach, there's a lot of sensitivity around the terminology we, we use in this context, you know, incident, breach, um, certain words connote certain things and require certain, uh, responses from the district, so one difference is an incident, hmm, kind of like someone bumping into you on the street, oh, you had a little incident on the street. A breach is like a full-on assault, okay? And it treated, think of those two things in terms of the gravity of those situations, right? Um, so when you hear those terms in the context of anything going on with, you know, ransomware hacking or any of that data security type thing, those are tip-offs in terms of how severe it was. The four things I have up on this slide, they're not sort of the universal things, um... The four things I have up on this slide, they're not sort of the universal things that everyone does, but they're sort of like the common threads, both in this space of cybersecurity for schools and also in what the insurance companies demand of us, which is a weird intersection, but it's just the reality of it. If you want to be in a position to be covered for any hack or incident in your district, you need to cover certain bases. So I'm going to cover each of these briefly and then kind of give you a status report on where we're at with each of them. And training and practice, we've been doing for years. Does it always stick? We'd like to hope it does, but not always, and that's why we keep doing it. An example that might be recognizing spoofing. We have this fun little game people play where they pretend to be someone else, and they send an email, and they say, hey, I'm so-and-so, send me a gift card or whatever. That's spoofing. Phishing, where they try and get you to give up personal information, that kind of thing. We do practice sessions with the staff all the time. We still run around a 5% failure rate, meaning someone clicked on something they weren't supposed to. So again, I don't know if we'll ever get to zero, but that's the goal, and we continue to do that type of training. So that's an ongoing thing. System updates, that's a boring one, that just means we keep our stuff up to date, we do our patches, we keep our servers on the latest version, that kind of thing. Of course, we're doing that. MFA is multi-factor authentication. You all would have gotten in the, caught up in the first group in the last few weeks to set that up. We are moving through the entire district. We have set the end of the month as our deadline to finish that, that rollout. We're right at about 70% as of this evening, which is pretty good. So we're going to keep plugging away, and we'll get everyone there. That's, that's a non-negotiable, that's like something, yes, we have to be at 100%. And I've already gotten comments from people who are like, someone asked for permission to log on, and it wasn't me. I'm like, yeah, that's the system doing what it's supposed to do. That's good, I guess, but it's working. And it'll be another step in the, in the path of keeping us on secure footing and keeping our student data and staff data safe. And endpoint protection is the other thing we are working on, and we're working with vendors to identify the best path forward on that. But basically, to put all those things in context, you know, training is what it sounds like, system updates is sort of like basic maintenance of your structure. Multi-factor authentication is like, do you have enough locks on the doors, and are you asking who's there? And endpoint protection is, you know, like a little guard dog in the house, like barking when something's in the system that shouldn't be. That's my little analogy for how those things play together. So that's a moment on cybersecurity. And again, I know that's been a hot topic, I know everyone would want to know, like, exactly, specifically what we're doing. I've given you the general overview, I will not tell you every specific thing we were doing, because of course, that's kind of like giving someone a playbook on how to attack us. We don't really want to do that, but want to make you aware that it is a thing we're taking care of and trying to address as much, best as we can. Before I move on, any questions on that topic? Everyone get their MFA set up? No? I think you all did. And if not, let me know. On the general topic of security, you know, when I say security, a lot, some people think cybersecurity, and some people think physical security. So I figured I'd just cover both briefly. Couple of the projects that are relevant to that, one is we're upgrading all the camera systems, the security camera systems in the buildings. This is taking some time, A, because that's a lot of cameras, and it's a big system in each building, and B, there was never a, a budget sort of spelled out for this. So we got creative. We're about halfway there in this wave of revenue. The revenue is coming from surplus device sales, so every time we have a graduating class that gives up their MacBooks, or eighth graders that move to high school and give up their iPads, then we take those, clean them up, put them out for bid, you get those on the consent, consent agenda from time to time, the surplus sale requests, and then we sell those off. So in the last three and a half years, we've accumulated about 600,000 from those sales. There's half a year path to the 1 million and change to do the initial upgrades to all these systems. So DOT, District Office and Dakota are done, Eagle Creek is done, Jackson will be finished sometime in June, I think. Working on getting the installer out to finish that one up, but all the stuff is here. West and East are ordered, and then we'll kind of go through, you can kind of see the path laid out on that chart. And that may change if a system just totally fails, we'll bump them up the line, which is actually what happened with Jackson, their system just, it was done. It was just done, so it had to be replaced. So that's one major project, and again, that impacts a lot of students and a lot of people, so we wanted to make sure you were updated on that. And then we've had some delays with shipping of parts for a real, a different infrastructure project, which is improving cell phone signals, boosting the signal in this building, because that's been an ongoing kind of forever problem. I get in the knowing grid over here from the students. Yeah, they know, they know. We know too, but it wasn't, and we can't fix the entire problem, but we have targeted the areas that are sort of like also the public-facing areas, meaning out on sort of the athletics end where people are coming in, you know, showing a ticket, and same thing on the theater side. So on the ends of the buildings, as you come in, we're starting there with that project and getting the signal boosted in those areas. We think it'll carry pretty well to into the commons on this side of the building, so. That you don't always know until it's in, but it is being worked on, so. Most of it's done, just waiting on the last few parts, and they'll finish that project. Any questions on physical security topics? Obviously, there's other physical security things we do, those are just the ones that are worth updating at the moment. All right. So then, might be looking for a little more Q and A on these parts. Technology and the curriculum, why is the tech department talking about curriculum? Because we've, we've gotten into this really great cycle and this really great collaboration with teaching and learning, or learning, teaching, and equity, sorry, I'm still backdating my name for them. We've had a science curriculum adoption in the last couple of years. We are now moving into math, looking at some pilots there, and we'll look into reading. And for each of these, it's nice because we get invited as a department to participate in reviewing these materials. We don't necessarily make any decision on it, but we're, we're in the room, which is a positive step. Because what we're seeing is something like science, like Amplify at K-8, a lot of materials are online, kids are on their iPads accessing things. Other curriculum-like project Lead the Way, there are certain text mater, textbooks that are accessed through a website or through an app called Inkling. Obviously, secondary Canvas is huge, like, as much as possible, we try and leverage a common system for accessing content. And I want to really make that point in this context. These things are all linked. So when we say, you know, years ago, when the, when the staff evaluated devices and went, decided, okay, we, we like the MacBooks and the iPads. That wasn't tech saying that, it was, it was the staff. There were committees that looked at this and said, for what we want to do in the next few years with the curriculum, and what we want the students to be able to do, these are the devices we think can handle this task. Great, moving on. What's the software look like? What's the ecosystem look like that the students are in? That's how you have things like Canvas as sort of the jumping-off point for all the content. Sometimes things are somewhere else, just because they have to be. But it, as much as possible, that helps to streamline the experience. The other thing with that, and again, just by show of hands or whatever, you know, as a parent, how many parents have like a Canvas Observer account? In here, yeah. Or an Infinite Campus Parent Portal account? Right? Or even a Seesaw account, more prevalent at elementary, but. So having that continuity, having that consistency makes it easier to get that out to our parents and help them be engaged. You've got one platform or just a couple platforms to look at, you know where to expect things to come from, you know what you're going there to see. That's all connected, that's all, you know, curriculum adopting what they adopt to have a good program for education, but then technology sort of being in the room to say, okay, how are we going to make this work? How is this going to flow well? How is this going to be a good experience for everyone? Sometimes it doesn't work. But being in the room helps us be more effective in diagnosing, okay, what's going on? How do we fix it? How do we make it work better next time? It's a good example of departments kind of being in that collaborative space and having a good outcome then for the staff and the students. And like I said, for the parents as well, because now their, their platform is counted. So I just wanted to touch on that again. Because we're doing a lot of adoptions over the next couple of years and some pretty hefty ones, I, I think it's, I don't know, it felt like something I should put, you know, sort of on the radar and kind of check in on with this group. Any experiences you guys have had? I'm not using Wait Time Well at all today, sorry. But as a parent, any comments or feedback or anything as far as some of the parent-facing pieces, or as students? If you could suggest like, oh, we loved Canvas, we hated Canvas, I can't wait to go to college and use something else, like, you know? Any other feedback you would give us while you have a chance?
Well, in relation to Canvas, I know that the university I'm going to uses it also, so it's something that most schools use.
It's something that most schools use, sorry, I'm far away from the mic. But I was saying that in relation to Canvas, I know that Canvas is something that my, the university I'm going to uses as well, and that most schools and universities use that, so I think it's very good that we're using it here, because students, when they, if they decide to go to a four-year college, they'll be using it there as well. So it's good that they allow, we allow students to get to know the system right now, so they can know it when they go continue forward, so.
Yeah, Danielle, that's a, that's a great point, as far as like, yeah, there's a lot of colleges using that system. And they, they're a company that targets both, you know, they started in the college market and then came down to K-12, so it actually was a natural sort of flow. So that, another thing, it works out well for us, but yeah, thank you. All right. And then last, last thing I want to touch on tonight, again, just to kind of connect some dots and kind of build off the last topic, the role of technology. I, I want to also kind of talk about some of the collaboration between departments like Special Education, Special Services, people in the assistive tech space, and things that we're doing there to like really reinforce for the staff, that the other thing these devices commonly do is things like read to them, translate, make text sizes different, do other types of adaptive elements that even if you don't have a physical need for it, I think it's good that we continue to reinforce that they can do these things, because some kids just learn better if they hear it, or they write better when they get the device to read it back to them. A lot of adults do too, and a lot of adults should. You know, there's, there's little tricks and tips that, that we are trying to continually reinforce that these are tools, and they are, they have a lot of power, they have a lot of smaller tools in there that you can use. Smaller elements that can make a big difference for specific students. Similarly, we have tried to really hone in on our systems where we can do things like utilize translation. So Tiffany could tell you like every element of our communication plan, like the website and Seesaw and everywhere else where that's a thing that's supported. Infinite Campus Parent Portal is all translated now in sort of the parent side. So if you, you go in there, not for every language, but for kind of our big four or five, they can pick from the languages and pick Somali, pick Spanish, Vietnamese, et cetera, that they're built in. We really want to make sure that the tools are there as a source of engagement and a source of like, you know, being able to compensate for or reinforce individual strengths. And I don't know, again, I leave that open for comment, just to see if there's any questions you have about how that works, or personal observations, or things we think, you're like, you know what, why doesn't it do this? Why doesn't it do that? Maybe it does, or maybe it's something we can look into, so. Any, any thoughts along those lines?
I will say, like, as a parent, that Canvas, I get a lot of email from Canvas, but it makes it really easy to monitor the day-to-day of what my son is doing, and if he's like slipping a little bit and not doing what he's supposed to, we can catch it right away rather than like wait for conferences or report cards and.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that.
Yes, and there are some notification settings, I can send you the link to our notes on tweaking those, so you're, it's a little less noisy. That's a common one, and I think the defaults are.
Right.
Very noisy settings. Yep, thank you, thank you for that. Okay. Last couple of slides are just informational, this is how you get help, this is how you contact us, and no other. Yes, thank you, Tiffany. See, nice queuing me up. And if you really want like the detailed, long version, because I already talked long enough, there's a link in there to the archive of previous reports, the last three long reports, so I think the last one's like 38 pages long. So my novels about the department and every little thing. So there'll be a new novel coming out probably next year, just in time for levy renewal, but that's a whole different, this, different meeting probably. So, yeah. Any other questions or any other things that, you know, I, I just touched on a few hot topics, but any burning issues for you guys?
Any questions for Brian?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Brian, for coming.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
8.2 on our agenda is an update on the 125th graduating class by Tiffany.
Yes, thank you. If it's okay, I will talk from here, that way I can run my own slides.
Sure.
All right. So this is, uh, this is really just a brief highlight, we've talked about it in development sessions, and just really want to bring it to light since the end of the school year is coming very quickly. And Dr. Redman had shared some information last year that he had researched as far as some milestones for our school, so we do have the Class of 2023. So Danielle, your graduating class is also the 125th graduating class in Shakopee. So just wanted to remind everybody and just bring awareness to this, this could probably be a SABR Pride item as well. So using some of that information that was obtained and shared prior, it's up there on the screen as far as when that first graduating class was to fantastic students in 1898, and also when Shakopee was admitted to the high school board. So there's some great presentations and things that will come in the future, whether it's our senior survey that closes, that our counselors at the high school do a great job of sharing where our students go, everything from two- to four-year degrees to trades to careers and everything of that nature. So this is intended to take that place and talk about all the great things that our Class of 2023 is doing, but really just remind everyone. our Class of 2023 is doing, but really just remind everyone that we do have that milestone and something really unique that's a part of this. I was trying to see if he was able to make it, but Joaquin is a junior here at Shakopee High School and the logo that you see on the screen was actually created by Joaquin to celebrate the 125th graduating class. If you look really deeply on the left side, that one is the City of Shakopee logo, there's a Saber and the two. And then we also have our Native American and American Indian group represented and approved by SMSC and APAC in the five there, just to represent the history, thought he did a great job with that. This is something that you'll see out and about in the community due to Joaquin's work, so he did a great job with that. And then, you know, again, I mentioned some partners. We've been in close contact with the Alumni Association, the Chamber and SMSC to find unique ways that we can make sure that we celebrate this milestone. We know it's really important, students like Danielle and all of our 650-plus students deserve to have, they're focused beyond them this year, so we want to just, you know, lightly put it in there and pay tribute to the history here while also celebrating what the current class is doing. So Shakopee Valley News will have an article coming out here in about a week and a half by the end of May to highlight the history in the 125th graduating class. You also see some great things that'll start the middle of this week in the school, just to make this sure the students and the staff can feel connected to that. And this is just one of our roadshow elements to make sure you as a school board can celebrate that as well. So again, there'll be other articles that are out and about in the community, make sure those that obtain information a different way than the old social media can get that information. And we will have some spotlights thanks to the Alumni Association of things that have occurred over the years, whether it's special namings of public places and parks in the community and why that's important to things that went on here at the high school. So again, just wanted to give you a brief note on this. We could have people come in here for hours to speak of all the great things that have happened over 125 years when it comes to graduating classes, probably not the ones that started, those first two. But happy to answer any questions, otherwise this is just a very informal informational item for everybody.
Any questions?
I'm just, I'm looking forward to seeing Jeff Policki from the back, that picture, that's like exactly where I was sitting like last year. I don't know if I took that picture, but looking forward to that view again of him doing the roller coaster.
All right, thank you Tiffany.
You bet.
And moving on, another informational item, and this time we have a district update from Dr. Redman.
Yeah, this, this district update really centers around information that was shared at last week's Academies of Shakopee Steering Committee. You know, quite often I'm, you know, I'm in different meetings and a lot of times I go, boy, it'd be great to share that with a wider audience, and so wanted to share that with, with our board and with the folks that are here and, and our school board audience. And just some of the information I think is really cool, the data here on graduation. Not going to go through every piece of that, but in the school year ending, you know, the 2021, 22 school year, our graduation rate for all students was 94.41%, which is a terrific number. And all the groups, and we, we always kind of break the categories of data apart by different subgroups and, you know, and if you look at that table, all of the groups have, you know, over 78.87% of their members graduating in '22. And five of the groups are, have graduation rates of 90% or higher. Those groups are obviously all students, are Asian students, Black or African, white, and then two or more races. And so just really thought that data is definitely headed in the right direction and well worth sharing, and so wanted to, to share that with you. And then as we move on to the next slide, you come across examples of work being done by our students in our Academies of Shakopee, our Arts and Communications Academy. They put together a 30-second video, if you watch Saber Live broadcasts, you may have seen it, but I thought it's on the next slide and I thought, man, let's take 30 seconds and watch this great work.
Welcome to the Academies of Shakopee. The academies provide a small school field and a large high school. Our incoming ninth graders enter the ninth grade academy, easing the transition to high school while learning more about our six career academies. The academies provide authentic, real-world experiences in collaboration with our community, strengthening the connection between elective courses and what students may decide to do post-graduation, making students college and career ready. Visit our website to learn more about the academies and how to partner with us. Well, welcome to...
And again, I just think, you know, we, we saw Joaquin's work with that logo, we've got other student work here. I, I'd venture to guess, if we didn't tell you that was done by students, you would assume it'd be, you know, professionals in the field. There, there's just some really, really good work, so. And then we've, we've been working with our partners, our academy champion partners with the Academies of Shakopee, on renewing our agreements with those folks for the next five-year period, starting July 1 of 2023, and then running through June 30 of 2028. And we've, we've been, we've been doing this work for a few months now and it's been great conversations and getting together and meeting and talking about, you know, where we've been in that journey since its inception, or since the inception of the Academies of Shakopee and how things are working and lots of great feedback. And as we roll through these slides, the next one, you know, we've done the renewals with the Human Services Academy Partners, which are the City of Shakopee and Scott County. And, you know, that, the City of Shakopee renewal was, was approved at their February 21 in the year 2023 city council meeting, which is on the next slide. And then if we go to the Scott County one, that was at March 7 of this year at their Board of Commissioners meeting. And we're trying to get together and I think sometimes we don't talk about the great things happening in our schools enough. And, and the renewal with partners, you know, we kind of take it for granted that we've got these amazing things going on with community partners. It just doesn't happen in other schools or other school districts, and so we wanted to be sure to, you know, when we're updating and signing these renewals, to share that with, with the public. And then we went over to St. Francis last week. We had a signing there and did the renewal with them and they've been amazing partners. And then if we go to the next slide, lots of these pieces are, you know, we're, we're finalizing, we're wrapping it up. If you look at the Ninth Grade Academy, I, I happened to see that email come in at about 5:30 this evening. You know, we're getting close with that contract where Valley Fair would be the academy champion of our Ninth Grade Academy. And then all the others, just again, really, really good conversations with SMSC, EndTrust, Hometown Bank, and then we're excited to welcome onboard Bayer, who if you didn't know it and you just kind of watched what was going on in the academies, you'd swear they're already an academy champion. So we, we want to formalize that and find ways to grow that already terrific partnership. And then, heck, you had a nice photo earlier, but you know, again, now it's, you know, fully approved, so want to thank all the students who applied to become the next student member of the school board and congratulate Michelle again. So welcome, Michelle, and that's my presentation this evening.
Any questions for Dr. Redman? Thank you for the information and the update. Moving on to committee reports and other information, and tonight we will start with, how about we start with Caroline?
So we have an upcoming engagement meeting this coming, upcoming Monday, so I don't have any things to report there, but I just wanted to say that I was able to participate in the Teacher Appreciation Week and that was really amazing, thanks to our partners for putting that on heart and it was just really amazing to see everyone get recognized.
Chad?
Yeah, nothing to report on community engagement. I think almost all of us were at the, the award ceremony last week and it was really fantastic. I really opened my eyes to a lot that goes on within the district and I told some people that just like the, like the genuine feeling of joy in the room just like lets me know that Shakopee is the right place to be, you know, a great place to be. And I think my wife told Tiffany at the end of the night, like, you should bring tissues next time, like.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I got a couple, a couple firsts for me and I'm in my third year on the board and it's just always exciting to do something new that shows the great things in our district. And so I, I got to participate in the Academy Steering Committee event for the first time and, you know, see all the presentations, you know, most, most of which, you know, Dr. Redman summarized here and just, I really don't know that much about the academies yet, so I'm just excited to learn more about it and, and just to see all the great things we're doing with our partners in the community. And then also, you know, echoing what the others said, you know, participating in the Saber the Night event for the first time and just seeing really how much of a family the entire school district is and, and just seeing that firsthand was really exciting. And, and like, you know, Chad said, most of us were there, but there was one notable absence, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder who is going to talk about this, but I'm, I'm talking first so I get to. We had one school board member who was absent and had a very good reason for that, and that's, just wanted to acknowledge that our Chair, Kristy Peterson, has been elected as the new president-elect of the Minnesota School Board Association, so congratulations.
Tiffany?
We had the Facilities Finance Meeting earlier, the topic that we voted on today having to do with the disposition of the central building. And I'll give a shout out to Tiffany and Amber specifically for putting together an incredible video in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, somehow convinced all the, the school board members to, you know, try their, their hand at acting, but.
It was my idea because I knew I wasn't going to be there.
Well, you wrote it. I was going to give you credit too for, for the article that you put together, but bringing it all together to showcase our educators, just a job well done. Thank you.
Mohammed?
I don't have a lot to say tonight, but, you know, I'm very excited, you know, great things happening in our school with, in academia, and academics or the performance. This is the, the highest, you know, graduation rate I have seen since I, 15 years I was in Shakopee. I'm very excited and thank you Tiffany, bottom together and selecting, you know, the best part of our videos. And also, I'm very happy, you know, that we have talented teachers in our school. And, you know, they have done a lot of jobs, they do, you know, a lot of things for our students. And so it's good, you know, to honor, and we did that, and I'm expecting things will be much better. And also I'm very happy, you know, CFC building, you know, five years, we were thinking about it, and now it's over and we closed that chapter. And congratulations, Kristy.
Thank you. Aditya?
I don't, I don't think I have, as far as I remember, I don't really have much to report. We obviously, like mentioned earlier, we have the Community Engagement Committee meeting next week and we got, I got to be part of that Teacher Appreciation Week video, so I wanted to thank Mrs. Olson and Chair Peterson for helping put that together, thank you so much. And as far as, also congratulations Chair Peterson for being the president-elect, so yeah, I think that's it.
I forgot something. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you so much. Danielle?
I have quite a bit because there's been a lot going on in our district. And this Thursday, we have a talent show that lead is putting on for students to showcase the talent, the talent, sorry, that we have in our district. So it's from, in our high school, sorry, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the main auditorium. And then as well as that, we had the HOSA State Leadership Conference, it was a while ago, but we had a lot of people, we finalists and champions and runner-ups at the state conference for that, for HOSA as well. For a night talk like Mr. Brown said, we had Agrim who was the champion, and then we also had many Okta finalists and quarterfinalists as well on the speech team. And we have first, a first speech also, a number of students who will be all-state, who were selected to be on the all-state team. So Sargum, Savani, myself, Ajay and Agrim, we were all selected to be on the all-state team, as well as all-conference mentions as well. So Agrim and Ajay were all selected as all-conference, and then we had some honorable mentions as well. We had seven people on our team selected as conference honorable mentions. And we will also be having, because our school district and our high school has been, we have a lot of more students going to more competitive schools, competitive colleges, we'll be having an event so that students who, underclassmen who have questions about applying for such programs can have questions answered. So that will be May 25 during the school day, and so any students who are interested will be able to come to that event. And then that is, I think that's, I just also want to say thank you as well for the award. I know they aren't here anymore, but the, this is, I'm very grateful and I was just talking to my family earlier about scholarships, so this is a very touching experience and I'm very, very grateful, so thank you, and that's all I have.
And it's, it was very exciting. I will say that if, if anyone has a secret that they need kept, I'm really good at it because I think I've known that you were receiving this scholarship for what, six weeks maybe? Something like that? It's, it's been a while, so, and then we were going to present it, what, at the April, end of April meeting, and then you decided you were going to go to Harvard and visit, and so we were like, we've got to hold on to this secret for another how many weeks? So, you know. Anyway, so yeah, no, it was, it's been a fun secret and, but I'm glad that tonight's over, so I don't have to hold that anymore because it was getting really, really hard. All right.
If I could say one thing, we created shirts, sorry to interrupt, but we created shirts, Aditya and I, so Aditya is showcasing that right now for student school board members, so Michelle will get hers, I'm sorry, short news, but those are the shirts and they say they are the last name on the back too, he's become the model, so, there you go, that's all.
Wow.
How did, how did we miss that earlier? That's awesome. We got photos of that?
That is unique. That's pretty awesome.
That's quite the elite team.
They're just trying to keep up with our Bob Collier shirts.
I guess I just have a couple of things. We had the Facilities Finance Meeting tonight, talked a little bit about upcoming budget that we'll be discussing at our meetings next month and potential, what we are projecting for, what's going to come out of the legislature here in the next week. So stay tuned for that. And then I have a Southwest Metro Board meeting tomorrow night. And then as Jeff alluded to, I had, I was at the MSBA annual meeting last Thursday, which is why I was not at the celebration last Thursday night. And, yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments and totally didn't expect that necessarily to happen, so I'm excited for the opportunity. I will be president-elect starting in January, so I have a little bit of time to kind of ease into it, but I'll be president-elect for one year, '24, and then president '25 and '26, and then past president '27, so. But as part of the annual meeting, we set our budget as an association as well, and we have decided not to increase fees. and, um, we have decided not to increase fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and our fees are based on ADMs, so, um, basically if, if your school attendance is zero, if, so if it doesn't increase, then your fees won't increase. If your attendance, um, or enrollment, I should say, decreases, then you're going to see a decline in your, um, membership dues. So that it's, that's kind of how that works from an association standpoint. But we made the decision that, um, just based on where districts were and the number of districts that are still facing budget cuts, that we were going to remain at a zero percent increase for the next school year. So with that, um, Jim, did you have anything that you wanted to add tonight?
Uh, I'll, I'm always trying to talk to something different at the end. Next Tuesday, East Middle School end of the year picnic from four to six-thirty, if you want to leave the doubleheader at somebody's last choir concert at West, right after. So, two, two additional events for the end of the year.
Okay, um, Angelica, City? Thank you. Tiffany?
Congratulations, the only items of the next Sunday, just all the events in here, so, uh, I'm just very excited to have them.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Because I'm not even up on the agenda screen. Yes, there are a bunch of dates coming up, um, we have Takata's, um, Q4 graduation on June eighth, which is also the last day of school for students, and May thirty-first is also the Saber Showcase, so that would also be an opportunity, um, for you to, um, come into school and see the students' awesome work. And another really cool thing is the Class of Twenty-three Feather Ceremony, which is at Turtles, um, from five-thirty to seven, which is another really cool thing. So if you get a chance, let's put that on your calendar. Anything else for tonight? Then I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Peterson and a second by Brophy, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?